Woody.
Okay, Mike Triple is on.
Woody, you're on mute, so hit that microphone button down at the bottom left.
Woody, the red microphone button, touch that.
He's got it. Mr. President, Mike Triple says that he's on by phone. Please remind everyone to mute, audio is terrible, he's saying.
Patrick, are we ready from your end? All right, everybody else ready here who's physically present? Folks who are here remotely, are we ready to go?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
We'll tell him to unmute as we go.
The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for May 4th, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, due to the continuing public health crisis, we will once again conduct the council meeting in a manner that allows for remote participation by council members, the public, and the media. In order for the meeting to be conducted in a businesslike fashion, council members who are participating remotely are reminded to keep their microphones on mute until their name is called as part of the roll call or a council member wishes to make a comment or ask a question during the meeting. After they have finished speaking, council members are reminded to once again place their microphone on mute. Members of the public who are participating remotely are also asked to keep their microphone on mute throughout the meeting with the exception of the public hearing of proposed ordinance 2020-08. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting comments. If there are no questions with regard to any of that, at this point, if you would, please join us in the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence in memory of the more than 68,000 Americans who have lost their lives as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons? Mr. Emmons? You'll need to unmute your microphone.
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
All council members are present?
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of March 16th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, I have several. I have appeal number 2020-10 to the Honorable Members of the Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a use variance for three units in R1 Single Family Residential, 201 Smith Street. The appeal is signed by Marlin Schwartz. I also have appeal number 2020-11 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is an appeal for a use variance for three units in an R1 Single Family Residential at 1210 West Sixth Street, and this is signed by Marlin Schwartz. We have appeal number 2020-16 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a use variance for relocating shipping containers and developmental variance for reduction of parking spaces, Bethel University Athletic Training Center. This is signed by Joe Zapia with Bethel University. We have petition number 2020-05 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 General Commercial, C5 Neighborhood Commercial, and I2 Heavy Industrial to R3 Multi-Family Residential, 1215 and 1225 East Jefferson. This petition is signed by Mark and Deborah Ham. We have petition number 2020-06 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and the Mishawaka City Plan Commission. This is a PUD amendment to allow quick service oil changes as a use and a reduction of parking spaces, setbacks in landscaping at 317 West Indian Ridge Boulevard. This is signed by Jessica Bogert and Mark Reichovich. We have petition number 2020-08 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Plan Commission. This is regarding annexation and zoning. This is to annex and zone to C1 General Commercial, 52921, 52861, 52885, 52841 for Road. This is signed by the petitioner, whose name is Daniel Plower. Our final petition is petition number 2020-09 to the Honorable Council of the City of Mishawaka and the Mishawaka Plan Commission. This is to rezone from I1 Light Industrial to C3 City Center Commercial, 407 West Fourth Street, and this is signed by Paul Mead.
Thank you. We have no report of special committees this evening nor any ordinances on first reading, so we will move into resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, we have resolution R2020-06. This is resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a report of compliance with statement of benefits for certain property owners. If you would want me to read those property owners?
Oh, why don't you?
Okay, BDSJ RMC Mishawaka Development, Long-Term Care Investments, Rock River Rock, Well Pet, Patrick Industries, Riverwalk Development Group, Lippert Components Manufacturing, and Jmail Packaging Corporation.
Thank you. We'll now move into council consideration of resolution number 2020-06 and begin with what we are promised to be a brief presentation by Mr. Prince with regard to this proposed resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken Prince, city planner. As was noted in the staff report, which is prepared by Derek Spear in my office, he did a very thorough job. We have 10 active tax abatements in the city. I think what's interesting to note this year is that this occurred right prior to the pandemic and the layoffs and the business impacts. So it'll be interesting to see this report next year and to see what the toll of the pandemic is for some of these businesses. Regarding this year's report, I think what is interesting to note is that the investments, when you look at all the investments across the board, one of them is greater than what they had anticipated, with the exception of the one that has not started construction yet, which is the Riverwalk Apartment Project. Secondly, Lippert, I know was a concern last year, and since that time, they've added 45 positions on their way to coming into full compliance of what they projected at that time, so that was good to see. Also, Jmail Packaging, I think is the other one I'd like to note, they had a downturn in terms of they'd lost one of their major persons they were doing business with, and ultimately, that didn't deter them from investing in another piece of equipment for $1 million without a tax abatement on the additional piece of equipment. So I think that's all good stories to tell, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Mr. Prince. I would just add our thanks for Mr. Spear and the work that he did. It was a very thorough summary of all the relevant points, so please let him know that we appreciate his work.
I will pass it on.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council with regard to proposed resolution 2020-06? Hearing none, then I will call for a question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yeah.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons? We lost you. Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
I don't know.
This is all.
Yeah.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 920.
Ordnance is on second reading.
Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2020-08, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone area south retention area from R1 Single Family to C1 General Commercial for 4019.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter, a proposed ordinance number 2020-08, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Okay.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the receipt of the committee report, although the favor is by Madam Clerk. Old habits harder to break. Would you please conduct the roll call?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yeah.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yeah.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report is accepted.
Thank you. With that, we will now move into the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-08. At this time, I will invite the public to unmute their phones and microphones for purposes of submitting such comments, one person at a time. Any person wishing to make a public comment will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and then after completing his or her public comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. So we appreciate everyone's cooperation, and we will begin by inviting the attorney for the petitioner to commence with her comments. Ms. Walker, are you still with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes. Good evening. This is Wendy Walker with Mae Oberfeld Lorber at 4100 Edison Lakes Parkway, Mishawaka. We represent the Lincoln Way Veterinary Clinic and the actual owner of the property, which is A&amp;J Properties LLC. The clinic, as you may know, faces Lincoln Way with the clinic building itself and then a parking lot on the corner. The lots that the clinic sits on run all the way from Lincoln Way to Norton Court behind it. The approximately third portion of the rear of those lots toward Norton Court is currently zoned residential, and we are seeking a rezoning of that from residential to the commercial so that we can add an additional parking area immediately behind the clinic building, and then also that will involve relocation of the retention pond. And that rezoning would also be consistent with the remainder of the block, which is zoned likewise in general commercial.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner's attorney?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm not sure if she'll be able to answer me or not, but yes, I do have a question. Ms. Walker, I believe it is, can you tell me, or do you know if that retention pond is a wet pond? Is there water in it year-round? Or is it a dry pond where it just has runoff and drains out after a rain?
I do not know the answer to that question. I believe it is just for runoff purposes, but I can't say definitely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions for Ms. Walker?
Yes, Mr. President, I do, if I could.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking off Mr. Compton's question, I'm looking at a satellite photo, and it does appear to be dry at the current time that this photo was taken. I guess my question is, if you could find out, if you don't have the answer right now, if the retention pond is full, what is the deepest it could be?
Yeah, I will have to locate that information, and also the existing pond would be relocated to accommodate the new parking lot, so it would move further back on the lot. We do not have a specific diagram yet showing the exact location of the new retention pond.
Okay, thank you. And then also, do you have any intentions of putting any type of barrier, fence, or rails around that retention pond?
We would be working with the city planning staff to meet any requirements that they would suggest when we actually get to that phase of the process. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker, anything else to add for the council?
No, appreciate your hearing this matter.
Oh, our pleasure, and thank you for your patience as we work through the access component of the meeting. Is there anyone else, any other member of the public who wishes to submit comments with regard to proposed ordinance 2020-08? If so, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, I will now call for any member of the public who wishes to submit comments in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-08. Once again, if you would, please begin by unmuting your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak?
Mr. President, I didn't know if Mr. Prince is there, if he could answer any of the questions regarding the retention pond and barriers? If he had any insight?
Mr. Prince is making his way to the podium.
As expected. Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Councilman Mamalenti. It is our general practice not to require any kind of barrier around retention areas. We are well aware of the tragedy that took place last year, and in terms of reviewing records, and this is all something that will be reviewed by the track commission that was supposed to be reviewed in May, but obviously with the current conditions, that meeting has been postponed. But going through over a decade of records, there are a total of 10 cars that ended up in ponds with the one incident of fatality. Of those 10, they were all not because of the design of the road, but merely driver error or weather condition related. So in our terms, it is not necessary to put, I would equate it very much to, we don't require people to put fences around the river. All the ponds on Edison Lakes, we look at as aesthetic amenities, and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't review every pond as it comes in to make sure that it's not positioned to protect the public, but in this case, backing up to Norton Court, as was indicated by the applicants' counsel, we do not have a design for this pond yet, but when we do have the design, I firmly anticipate that it would be a dry pond, and it would be designed as such to fill and then evaporate or sink into the ground, and that it would not be a wet pond.
Okay.
Also, with the position on Norton Court, it is not located on an intersection, so in order for somebody to be driving straight on Norton Court, they'd have to literally veer and drive into the pond either completely by accident, or there's no way that somebody would accidentally turn at a 90-degree angle to turn into this pond without some other extenuating factors, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
Are there any other council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti? Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920.
Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Walker, for your presentation. We will now, in light of the continuing nature of the public health crisis, move past privilege of the floor and move into unfinished business, of which there is none. So that leaves us with new business and with regard to COVID-19-related issues from Mayor Wood, Your Honor.
Mr. President, council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to come here to give you an update on this pandemic from a city perspective. As it stands today, there are 668 cases that have been positively tested in the county to date, of which the last number I saw, 292 recoveries and 20 deaths here in St. Joe County. Here specifically in Mishawaka, the data that we can look at as far as run volume, data at the Mishawaka Fire Department, Mishawaka Police Department, that specifically meet the pandemic framework, we continue to be low and stable as far as those runs. We've had six, just had six over the weekend. Last weekend, we had six as well, and it's important to know that the vast majority of those always end up being negative. Over at our clinic, we are seeing no increase in volume. We are, employee that has tested positive to date, could very well happen in the future, but as of now, we have not seen that. Things are very steady at the clinic and doing well. So we have successfully flattened the curve. As we all can remember, that was intended to keep our hospitals from seeing a surge. Well, based on reports we see from the hospital, they remain largely empty, not filled with COVID patients. So based on all of that assessment here locally, we have decided to follow Governor's, Governor Holcomb, Indiana, back-on-track plan, and we will do that based on what we are seeing here locally. We do have the ability to go stricter than that if we'd like, but we are not doing that here in Mishawaka. I have, we're planning, in fact, to return to normalized operations here at the city as far as our city government, and operating under emergency, I guess you'd call modified operations over the past, well, since the beginning onset of the pandemic. I've asked all of our department managers to come up with a plan to bring their departments back up to normal operations, considering all of the guidance, the recommendations out there from the CDC, from the feds, from the state, even from local folks as well. So we have, I've asked for those as of last Friday, I got all of them, and today we're reviewing them. We have assigned a implementation team to go out to all of the departments to make sure that whatever we, whatever plan we need to implement, we can get that done. So as of today, all utilities are open, all the divisions are running on normalized operations. Next week, next Monday, in fact, we plan to get the police lobby back open for reports and different things that our citizens can access. On May 11th, we plan to have central services back on more normalized operations. Speaking of central services, we, the first two, we had Operation Quarantine Cleanup. First two phases of that went very well. Phase one was our leaf pickup program, old leaf pile left behind. Our guys got through that very quickly and efficiently. Phase two was the large item cleanup, also the drop-off at two points, one in South Bend and one in Mishawaka, that has been going relatively smoothly. And then phase three will kick in essentially when the hazardous household waste program opens up with the solid waste management district board. They're opening up on May 11th, per guidance we heard coming out of them today, and we intend to open our site on May 12th to take hazardous household wastes, including chemicals, paints, solvents, electronics. And then we'll also be taking brush out there at our Fifth Street Recycling Center as well. And then City Hall, we are not yet accepting the public in the City Hall, we have remained open, but we will implement our plans first in each of the departments, and they'll look a little different for every single one of our department. And so, once we get those plans implemented, we're going to shoot for next week hopefully, but, you know, depending on how that goes as far as ordering, you know, things such as Plexiglas screens and hardware and such, it'll depend on that. And again, we have a committee that will go around and review each of those implementation plans with each department to try to get those up and running as best we can. Then, over at the controller's office, we are tabulating all of our expenses. So far to date, we have about $100,000 in COVID-related expenses. We are keeping track of absolutely every penny that we spend in every department, and all of our managers are helping to keep track of that in cooperation with the controller's office. We have hired Baker and Tilly to do projections for us as far as our, our planning, our compreh, updating our comprehensive financial plan to take into account this pandemic, ultimately, the future tax revenue and such, the way that'll be impacted and how it'll impact our budget. We haven't seen that yet, we anticipate that here within the next couple of weeks. On a call today with state department managers for all of the departments, Governor Holcomb, when he did his press conference Friday, announced that the state would make available 300 million in CARES Act funds directed to the state, he will redirect those to the locals. That includes local governments, municipal, and county. So far as we know now, it will be based on population, and it will be specifically to reimburse COVID-related expenses. We don't know how much that means for Mishawaka at this point in time, and we don't know what further guidance is on that, however, we anticipate starting to get some of that next week. We're also continuing to lobby for federal stimulus, and so we think that federal stimulus package number four could include some local funding. We'll leave it when we see it. That's, you know, we're certainly optimistic and hopeful for that. And as far as recovery, we're continuing to work on our recovery planning. Right now, we have about a three-phase plan that we're working on. First of all, for our citizens, we want to make sure that we can help those who were impacted by COVID, our citizens, so we're still planning to do that through basic necessities, assistance, and partnering with our nonprofits who serve specifically in Mishawaka, Mishawaka residents. We want every dollar as much as possible to go straight to our citizens in need who have been harmed by the pandemic. So that could include basic necessities, also utility, utilities relief. And so, we had a conference call last week with HUD, we think that they will approve our plans. We think that they will approve our plans and let our plans fit with their guidance. Still haven't seen the check yet, though. As far as small business, we continue to refine our plan and modify it, and we're close to the end, I think, with our Prince's help here to do some small business mom and pop shop relief. That will look like zero interest loans or low interest loans that will be able to be used for things such as purchasing inventory as businesses start to reopen and then to, or basic expenses. So we have identified some funds. We intend to bring that to the council for your review. Do that, maybe even having to schedule a different, you know, an additional meeting to do that, depending on how quick we need to move forward. And then we're looking again still at our bonding capacity, and do we have the ability to bond, to maybe do some projects now that might help keep some of the bigger companies in place, in business with their workers working? We're looking at trying to make sure that if we're doing this as a stimulus, we want local companies, local labor. Want that to be the goal here. So, so we're looking at that. That's probably a little bit mid-range timeline, probably more like three to six months out, somewhere in that nature. But that's essentially what I have for you today, and is there any questions you may have?
Thank you.
Any questions for Mayor Wood? Mrs. Bulker?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Wood, are parks open yet, or when will that happen?
Parks are all open, playgrounds are not. So the only thing that is not open are playgrounds. Dog park is not open yet because of social distancing requirements for pets, and so that prevents us from opening the dog park. We are planning to, as of now, to open the pool as soon as we can. So we're still waiting on state guidance for that, as to when that might happen. We're looking at probably a little bit of a reduced pool season, and then we will likely open at least three of our splash pads, one on the north side, one central, one on southwest. So as it stands now, that, we're at least planning to do that. But that'll, we almost look at it like a playground. As soon as we can open a playground, we can probably then open up the splash pads. So that's, that's our thinking for planning.
Thank you.
You. Other questions for His Honor?
Yes, Mr. President, I've got a question. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the report. I appreciate it. Appreciate the update. Looking at something I've seen on backtrack, back on track Indiana plan, which comes out from the governor, is I understand it for office settings, they're recommending that people work remotely up until the second week of June, if I read that correctly. Wonder what your thoughts are on that, and did you consider that when you, when you're talking about opening up the city offices? Or are you considering that as you're opening up the city offices to the public, things of that nature?
Well, as far as our public, as far as the private sector, we're encouraging our businesses to do the right thing, to follow all recommendations, all guidance that happens to be out there, to develop plans before they open, don't just come in and open shop, but to develop plans that can comply with the guidance that's out there. And that's going to then be up to them. We expect them to make good decisions, and we make our, expect to, you know, we, you know, we trust our citizens to make good decisions, too. As far as City Hall specifically, we're already open. We have remained open with our essential services. Most of our staff now is working here. We don't, it's very rare that we have staff working from home. So for us, we'll figure out a way to do it so that, you know, we can comply with the social distancing. That's what the purpose of our return to normalization plans are. We're able to do that in a safe way that we can comply. We have until that date to get our plans in place, but we think we can do it, you know, rather quickly.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mayor Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I would just echo Mr. Compton's comments. I appreciate your, the information that you've shared with us this evening and on other instances as well, including in between council meetings, as well as the work that you and your department heads and all of our staff are doing, to help us maintain essential services throughout this process. As you referenced and as we've talked about before, I do think it's important as soon as the financial picture becomes clearer, or as clear as it can be with so much uncertainty, that, you know, we have an opportunity to receive a presentation from the controller and the financial advisor with regard to that. It sounds like that is in process. So as soon as we can get that scheduled, as well as start to take a look at what we can do to implement any type of local assistance that we provide, and I'm certainly willing to work with you, and I know others will be as well, to schedule a special meeting of the council if necessary in order to get that aid out to the public as soon as possible. Much like Mr. Compton, I spent some time over the weekend reading through the governor's plan as well as the executive order, and, you know, it's fairly dense reading. I'm sure you've been through it as well, and there's a lot in there. And it sounds like you and your department heads are incorporating that guidance into our plan for implementation, and I know you're just reviewing those documents right now, but I thought that there was, you know, from my perspective, at least a lot of good guidance in there with regard to data, to monitor, as you referenced, as we're moving through the various stages, and then safeguards to put in place for employees. Long good way of leading up, as you start to reach decisions with regard to how the public will interact with folks here in City Hall, if you can make sure that you share it with us so that if council members need to expect perhaps, and this is speculation on my part, that they would undergo a temperature check, it would be nice to know so that we can, you know, allow for that as we're, you know, coming to a meeting, that kind of thing. But, you know, it, it sounds like there's been more communication along those lines that's forthcoming.
And we have purchased thermometers, thermal thermometers infrared for each department, so we'll have multiple thermometers there. Very hard to come by now, but we have, we have those on order, and that will be part of it now. We don't have the ability to make every employee take their temperature, whether it's at home or whatever, so, but we will have those available here. We are in certain departments now, like police department, fire department, we are taking temperatures and recording those right now.
Who would have thought that like thermometers and gowns would be at such a, you know, premium? But it's the world that we live in, right?
Yeah.
So just so that we have an idea as to what to expect when we are in and out of City Hall, you know, if you could share that information with us, I think we'd all appreciate it. Along the lines of, you know, banks to pass along, if you would, please express our appreciation to Chief Wachowski and Police Department with regard to what I understand is the good work that they did this past Friday with addressing, you know, the cruising on McKinley. You know, certainly it's understandable that everybody's chomping at the bit to get out, but I think we all were very concerned about what happened the first Friday, and it sounds like the Police Department acted very appropriately to address the concern without overstepping and, you know, causing it to become a confrontational issue. So we appreciate them addressing it.
All right, I'll pass that along. Fifty-four citations written as of Friday night, some reckless driving, those kinds of things, and our officers did a great job.
And again, you know, I, I think we've all said in separate conversations, we understand the desire of people to get out, to return to a greater level of normalcy, but it has to be balanced, not just against the pandemic concerns, but also against the communal concern that we have with regard to the issues that we had on McKinley in the past, and I don't think any of us, and yourself included, want to go back to some of the problems we fought long and hard for those years. Some of us on this dais and other capacities fought long and hard for many years to try to address those concerns. So we appreciate the work that you've done. One of the other things that I've heard from several members of the public, and it was posed more in the form of a question, I know from having had more of an opportunity to communicate with you, that you're in regular communication and your task force is in regular communication with St. Joseph County, health officials, governmental officials, and then others in southwest. If you could, for a minute, you know, to the extent that people are going to review this meeting, you know, now or in the future, can you touch on for a little minute, for a couple of seconds, how it is that you're interacting with the folks in the other jurisdictions and coordinating our efforts here in Mishawaka?
Interestingly, I've been on the phone multiple times today with the county commissioner, with Mr. Ray, who's the COVID coordinator, and have been on the phone with Dr. Fox as well. And, you know, sometimes we get notified and alerted to decisions, and sometimes we don't, but it's their prerogative to make decisions in the best interest of the people that elected officials represent. And so, so if something major is going to happen, I usually get a daily report from, from the county COVID coordinator, and so I'm able to read. And occasionally, they will enter our, participate in our meetings as well, as far as the county, you know, the commissioner doesn't, but the county COVID coordinator does. He's a part of the unified command task force that meets every day, so that's a group that's in touch, and healthcare professionals, the health department, they meet daily, and then Jeff kind of reports that out to the communities. And then from there on, you know, every community's got to deal with that information. It's their prerogative to do so.
Thank you. And then, you know, not so much a question, but a comment. I, I, I would agree with your encouragement for the community to follow Governor Holcomb's plan, you know, having read through it again a couple of times. In general, I think it's very well done. My biggest concern, having read it, and as it started to roll out into the public, was that people were fixating on the portions of it that they liked, that provided a little bit more freedom, but they weren't as focused on the continuing guidance to maintain social distancing and to work from remote, work via remote from home as we advance through the stages. So I appreciate your emphasis on, you know, trying to follow Governor Holcomb's plan, and hopefully everybody will follow, not just the parts of it that are more liberating, but also those parts that allow us to continue to monitor the data and work through this in as responsible fashion as we can.
And we always say, you know, we encourage people to take the responsibility themselves. We have faith in them to do that, to continue the social distancing and to follow those recommendations. We get a lot of calls every day into the office. So for instance, St. Joe County is doing now a mandatory mask if you cannot social distance. So what does that look like for us? They make the decision. We didn't necessarily get consulted on that, but we get the calls, assuming that we're the enforcement agency on that. Mishawaka Police Department cannot possibly go out and enforce every business, you know, that order for every business who doesn't have a hand sanitizer in the front lobby or who's not wearing a mask somewhere within the store. We just cannot possibly do that. So, you know, we will not. I don't think St. Joe County Police is enforcing that either. I don't think the City of South Bend Police Department is doing that either. But, so those are the things our citizen, a lot of information out there, our citizens, since they're in Mishawaka, they just assume we're the enforcement agency. We cannot be. And so, we just don't have the manpower possibly to even do that, and, you know, in addition to our day-to-day operations.
All right. Any other questions or from Mayor Wood?
I guess, I don't know if you can answer.
I cannot answer. I cannot answer that. I was not a part of that decision. And that, and that was one of the things that I was, was saw, saw an early email that went out. It was recommendations. It was a recommendation to do those things, and then somewhere after that, it became mandatory without consultation, so of us at least. So can't answer that.
Thank you, Mayor Wood.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business to come before the council?
Just a couple of cleanup items from my end. Thank you once again to Mr. Stokes and our IT staff for the assistance that they provided. We have continued to improve on this as we have gone along, and I personally liked the integration of the video component here so that those who are participating remotely were able to at least be somewhat visible. It was an added benefit to have a bird's eye view of Mr. Mamalenti's wine cave, so thank you for that, Mr. Mamalenti. And then also, thank you once again to our city clerk, Mrs. Ledeckah Block, who, as always, was very helpful in assisting us to work out the details and make this meeting happen. As was indicated last time, the council has instituted, you know, changes in the way that we are conducting our meetings during the current public health emergency. These changes are consistent with the terms of multiple executive orders that have been issued by Governor Holcomb as well as related legal guidance, and we anticipate that we will return to the council's normal meeting procedures, consistent with the guidance of the governor and other public health authorities as we move through this public health emergency. We'll continue to try to be as liberal as we can with regard to participation, but it may well be that there are additional remote meetings or hybrid remote meetings until we advance further in the stages. I think it's all important for us to remember that, and I hearken back to my reading of the governor's executive orders, he has extended the public health emergency on into June 4th. And what I found to be striking personally was the statement in the executive order 2025 that "The virus remains a threat to the health, safety and welfare of all residents of Indiana, such that emergency conditions continue to exist and further efforts are needed to address, control and reduce the threat posed by COVID-19." So as we start to talk about being open for business and a return to normalcy, there still needs to be, in my mind, a balance with the ongoing public health concerns and a review of the data to make sure that we're all making the best decisions in the, in the interest of the community as we work through this process. So thank you again to all who made this meeting possible, as well as the council for their patience as we have worked through the technology, both those of you in the chambers and who are participating remotely. And with that, if there is no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Be safe, folks.